Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019, 6:30 in the McCallum Hearing Room. First order of business, public comment. Okay, that being said, we're set. Scheduled appointments, Eric Hanson proposed Eagle Scout project presentation. Eric, hi, how are you? Welcome. Step forward, we're excited to see what you're going to present.
All right, cool.
And I believe the microphones, you can sit right there.
Sit right here.
Yep, the microphones are on at the table.
So, is the projector on?
Why is the projector on?
It should be. Is...
Did you put it on over there?
Is it computer, is this later?
The resline.
All right, we're having some technical difficulty.
I don't know what else to do.
It is on, it's green. It should be on. All right, is there another port in the back of the computer?
No, it was, it was up, was it, was it up on the screen for us?
I, the screen was like up, you missed it.
Did it ever show the presentation?
Eagle Scout project next year for new projector. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you need to stop by.
So just to...
You can turn around and present.
I mean, I think we have a print this way.
Yeah, it's not working, they just turn it around.
Well, the selectmen have the presentation.
Yeah.
This is just for everybody.
It's for the public at home, and if we can get it going, that would be great. If we can't, then...
Just grab them, like, just talk about it, and this is live.
Okay, so just want to talk about it?
And you can use your, you can kind of go through your presentation if you want. Eric with the computer, even though it's not live up there, all your information, you probably can speak well enough.
The slide on the website.
Okay, and we'll put the slides up on the website.
All right, sounds good. This is a good distance. All right.
All right, welcome again.
All right, thank you. So I'm Eric Hanson, I'm a Boy Scout from Truville in Southborough. I'm also SBL with, co-SBL with Andrew Zalov. And so my product description, my plan is to build a kiosk sign at the corner of White Bagley and Framingham Road and Boston Road. So a lot of people tend to pull in there and park there so they can go fishing or hiking or running in the surrounding area. And I would like to, since they've already driven over it and kind of compacted the land, you can see where people drive, and I would like to sort of make it more defined and show and guide them where they can go, and put in five parking spaces with a kiosk sign so people know the trails in the area, if they would like to figure different ways they can go, and have five different parking spaces, so to create room. And the sign regulations, I have them up on this, but it's six foot by 10 square feet. And the benefit, the benefit is so the public will have a place to park, and it'll make it more safe because some people tend to park right on the side of the road and could have hazards with people getting out of their cars and such. And for my beneficiary, which is the Trails Committee, they, they are creating a borough loop and working with surrounding towns, create a big loop through all the towns. And Ca- Catherine, the one I met with, she said that could be a potential starting point where people could park, walk the trails, make a big loop and come back. So leadership, for me, I, my goal is to make sure that people don't, a lot of the kids don't get bored and start wandering around, and that's one of my safety issues. Since it's working on a busy road, I don't want people to be running near the streets, since we will have to be working near the streets to put down gravel and such, we don't want people to be running near the streets, so I just want to make sure people are staying safe and constantly working. Obviously, we'll have a break, a food and all that, but don't want to have any accidents. And then some of materials, I'm going to need some crushed gravel, I'm obviously going to need to build signs such, and I'm going to need snacks and food for my scouts and other people who, voluntary, exactly. And then tools, hammers, saws, I'm also going to need to haul in the gravel, which I can either get the company that I purchased the gravel from, or I have a friend who has a dump truck his dad has. And then permits and permissions, we'll get permission from you guys and, yeah. And then safety issues on Route 30, just want to make sure, I'm not sure if we could block it off, or something else, so you guys suggest, just to keep it safe, however you guys think that would be best doing it. And then, we have the area pictures. So that shows where people would pull in. Most people pull in right before the light. There is a gap, there is a little metal pole sticking out of the ground where a pole used to be. We would cut that off and sort of bury it and lay the gravel down on top of it. And we would probably do it 10 feet deep because covering the entire area with gravel would take a lot of time and it'd be a lot of gravel to haul in. So just covering part of it and just showing people where they can enter in one way and then exit out the other way, it'd be like you can only enter right at the light and then exit at the other side. And the town also has cement columns that I was told, that I could use to define where people could park, so they know actually where to go. And the overhead view, you can see where the light is, people pull in right there. And then I could put a sign, small metal sign that just says entrance, and then maybe another one says exit, just to make sure people know exactly where to go, so there's no confusion. And that's just another view, showing how far it would go. And cars would line up against the guardrail, and there are a couple rocks that, like a mound of rocks that we could put the trailhead sign right in front of. So, that's the plan.
Great, thank you. Have you spoken to Karen Gallagher at all?
Yes.
She's a tremendous, tremendous resource to be able to use. I would assume, Mr. Purple, that that's town-owned land, or is, I would assume this isn't DCR land because Karen would have guided him down a different path?
It is.
She would have, yes.
Okay, so it is town-owned. Are there any requirements, I guess that's a concom or a Karen question, I was just wondering if there would be any requirements through DCR based on the reservoir? That's, again, that's probably a Karen question as well. And if you're talking to Karen, then you're certainly going absolutely in the right direction.
Yeah, she said there shouldn't be any issues with that.
Okay, I think it's a great project. I think it's another fine example of allowing people to get out and to access some of the trails and some of the benefits that, you know, Southborough has to offer.
I like to go back there a lot, so...
Yeah, it's beautiful, so thank you.
Sure, thanks. Again, it sounds like a great project. The kiosk that you mentioned, do you have an idea of what is going to be on the kiosk?
Yeah, it's going to be the trail sign of the surrounding area, and Kat will, Catherine McKee will provide that for me, the Trails Committee.
Okay.
She said she'll, she has an idea of what she wants, of the borough loop and such.
Okay, no, it's great. And I was on a committee years and years ago that talked about public ask, access to the reservoir area itself, and one of the points that I had made then, and I've made it a couple times in other instances as it has arisen, is that we need to do a better job of providing access to the access that we have, and providing a place for, for cars to park and, you know, defined areas at the beginning like this, I think that's a great idea. I think it'll really come in handy, it'll prevent, you know, people that do use the trails from, you know, parking in neighborhoods and trespassing and all that. So I think this is a great idea. Thanks for doing it.
Yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Staniff?
I'm not going to repeat everything that was said. Eric, when did you plan on starting this?
I wanted to get it done sometime this spring, or if it had to go into summer a little bit, fine.
All right, so each step of the way, you'll check in with the DVWs superintendent for safety reasons, all that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm so sorry, thank you.
Me as well.
And you may have covered it, and I missed it, but I'd encourage you two to check in with Chief Paulus, again, you know, traffic details that may be needed as you're doing the work, just to be sure that, that everybody's safe in that area, so...
Make sure to do that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for coming in, greatly appreciate it, and I see Catherine McBees here as well from Trails.
And we will...
Is there something you wanted to add? Mark said no.
Well, I think the Trails Committee is very excited about this project when he came up.
Oh, can you go to the microphone, I'm sorry. I know, hate to put you on the spot, but I saw you were here and...
No, the Trails Committee is really excited about this project. When he first presented it, it was something on our to-do list, so he read our minds essentially, and we're really happy to support it.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we could certainly take a vote, it's not required, but we can certainly take a vote of confidence and...
Yes.
Okay.
But I want to follow up. We will see that it'll be put on the town's website, and where will it be put?
On the...
A lot of work went into it, and I really like it out there so that we can, under DVW or Trail?
So we'll put it, so we can put it under, we can link it to a bunch of different places, we can put it under Selectmen, we can link it to Trails.
Trails, okay.
And...
Is there an update page as well? Can we link it to the update page?
If there's something that we can link it to along the, along the bottom and that, we will do that as well, so...
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, do we have a motion to support the Eagle Scout project from Eric Hanson that he presented us here tonight as shown?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, thank you for coming. Next up, new volunteer interview, Thaddeus J. Suley, Open Space Preservation Commission, term 6/30/22. Welcome. I actually served with Thad 12 years ago on the Open Space Commission. He's left, he's done some, some great things. I may add, he was on the Master Plan Committee back in 2008, and we're currently updating that now, so you may be useful on that. But Thad, why don't you give us a little bit about your background, what, what you've done since you last were in Southborough? I know you've kind of done a ton of amazing things, and if you wouldn't mind sharing those.
It's great to be back. Everybody looks like, like how they looked before. I feel like I'm the only one aging in the room, I just want to say that. It's good. No, I, I, obviously I went and I worked for the town of Chelmsford as a conservation agent, and I also worked in the town clerk's office there, so I have some local government knowledge. And during that time, I was able to go back to school and pursue a law degree, and that was very successful, and I think that's what helped bring me back to Southborough. And I'm working again at Beals and Thomas, which is at 144 Turnpike Road, and has been here since 1999, and appreciate the quality of life that this town has to offer, and it's immediately present. When, when I moved back, I was like, oh, now I remember what the Emerald Gem in between Framingham, Marlborough, and Westborough is like, and it's a true experience, and it's great to hear young folks like the Boy Scouts and other people who are working in the community in order to make that quality of life persist into the future for the next generation. And that's what I enjoyed about working on the Open Space Preservation Commission before, and I hope to bring back to this town.
Thank you. And I, I would like to say that when we were on it, on the commission together, it was great because the knowledge that Thad has towards being a conservation specialist and everything, it brought a great value to what Open Space was doing and the protections that Open Space was doing. So it was an absolute pleasure, I can say, when I did work with them, so. Any questions from the board?
I'm glad he thinks we didn't age. I believe I appointed you.
Yes, you did.
First time. No, I have no questions. He's a great asset.
Thank you.
I agree, no questions, and thank you for your interest in the commission.
Thank you.
It'd be a great addition, I think.
All right. Do we have a motion to appoint Thaddeus J. Suley to the Open Space Preservation Commission, term 6/30/22?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome back.
Welcome back. You'll get a letter from the clerk and come in and get sworn in?
I'm going to get my homework in the back row tonight. Working, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And if there are any other opportunities that the board would be interested in, I'm always willing to serve. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. You probably shouldn't have said that out loud on tape. You may be taking up on that. Next up, Town Council, Aldo Cipriano, for an update. Good evening, sir, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the board, and Mr. Purple.
It's been a while since you were here last, so we thought it would be good to just kind of tell, give us an update on some of the things you've been working on, and I'm sure there's CRs and such that it would be great to have the update on.
I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you.
And we'll start with the Halloran Conservation restriction, where the new review individual in the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, John Jioa, who's been there about over a year now, is a superior gentleman, very cooperative with local government, has come back with some minor changes and basic comments, and the Conservation Commission has accepted those revisions, and the draft is going back to the state shortly. I haven't had to have any specific involvement with that except for addressing the language relative to an existing easement on the property and a subordination clause. But for that, I believe Melissa Danza has taken the, the lead on that, and I'm glad she did because that was my recommendation. She needs to interact with these people in the executive office to learn more about the workings. I know enough about them over the years. So that, that's under control and is in further review, and we'll just monitor and see what the final draft comes back after they've approved it. And the golf course CR is also, was forwarded to John Jioa with further comments. I guess there were some additional comments of the, of Golf Course Management Company, which were integrated, on the use of the course outside of the greens, and that is also, from what I understand, pending before the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. So the, these aren't easy processes, they take time, but both are moving forward. The next topic, I think, would be the status of the acquisition of the site of the Fable Village Hall, and it's under agreement, and recently, a request was made by council to Mr. Deli Priscoli for an extension. They are working diligently, because I've been working with them and giving them as much information as I can to guide them, title back information and, but additional time is needed. Because of the agreement, it does not really need a vote of the board, the, the agreement would allow me to extend it, but I felt it appropriate to at least inform you that that would be extended, and we're going to continue to monitor that closely to ensure that it, it comes to an actual sale after all the permitting is obtained as soon as possible. So that's under our constant review. There was some discussion or, or questions relative to matters relative to 70 Valley Road, the former Stony Brook Golf Course, which was subsequently acquired by a third party, and that is of interest because applications were made for Chapter 61 exemptions, and determinations were made by the Board of Assessors with my guidance, that the types of uses that were being put to the property did not qualify under the statute. And the, in effect, the exemption was denied. And then another aspect of issues came up when the Department of Conservation and Recreation by their Deputy General Counsel, Tom LaRosa, became involved, because there is historically a restriction on the property that was put on when it was owned by the mass, the MDC Waterways Commission many years ago, and now successors are DCR. And additional uses were being suggested under a new application for an exemption, and initially, the, the assessors are advising me that they still don't think it qualifies, but the property has even more significant problems, because the general counsel to the DCR has indicated to the new council, to the property owners, that most of what they intend to try to do on the property, they can't do under that restriction. And it even goes so specific as to say, the existing outbuildings may not be occupied as a residence under any circumstances, and there's some evidence that they are, and the existing septic system is prohibited. So this site for any type of intended use as we now know it, is being rejected not only by the assessors, but also by the DCR. So we're going to just monitor that. I know the council, who is representing those people, he's a former city attorney down in Malden, but there's, there's too many issues right now for any of the uses that they've suggested, and it remains in the jurisdiction of the assessors. I can give you a general overview for informational purposes, particularly for, you know, subsequent town officials that may come in, that, as you all know, that we have several continuing appeals on the so-called Park Central Project, and there are actually five cases in at least three different courts. And one of them, which is Green versus Southborough ZBA and Park Central LLC, has been taken to further appeal by Mr. Green through his council to the Appeals Court after a dispositive motion was granted to the Zoning Board of Appeals as it, in Worcester Superior Court, as it related to procedural issues of standing and aggrieved party status. Well, all briefs by all of the lawyers have been duly filed with Appeals Court. It's, it's difficult to speculate when they'll hear it, but that is on appeal. The principal case is Huang versus others, excuse me, and others versus the Southborough ZBA and Park Central, and that went to a rather comprehensive review by a new judge, Judge Ritter in Worcester Superior Court, who took the entire case and wanted to have it reheard on motions for summary judgment and for expanding the record. He gave us all parties, all the time necessary to make all arguments that we intended in two sessions. One was in late January and one was on February 12th, and that currently is with Judge Ritter, who will make a determination as time allows. The, the third case is the case of Park Central versus the Zoning Board of Appeals whereby the, and this is in land court, whereby the, in effect, the Zoning Board of Appeals remanded the case to the, the planning board, but with the understanding that the planning board needed more detail on site plans. That was the situation with the site plan, the site plan was denied by the planning board, and the reasons were there was insufficient detail. And that appeal was taken, that was initially handled by Judge Schreier, who was the former chief judge of the land court. She then retired, and Judge Rubin, a new land court judge, took, took it over, and we were in court with an update in March, March 5th actually, to advise her of the status. And the status of that particular case turns upon the submittal of a revised plan relative to conservation assets or conservation issues. And that was part of an appeal to DEP, and DEP, in effect, indicated that the developer had to submit a modified plan relative to the site. So in a sense, in a significant sense, that suggested that the Conservation Commission acted correctly when they initially denied an order of conditions, because they felt that they just didn't have enough information relative to the detail. A new environmental council has come in on behalf of the developer, and we are being assured that a subsequent plan will be filed with the Conservation Commission in the next few weeks, and we, because of all that, we have a further status with Judge Rubin on the land court matter, scheduled for, I believe, May 7th. So that's the status of that particular case. The DEP appeal, in effect, found that a new pl- plan had to be filed, so that, that's really out of central region at this point. And then the, the final one is really a dormant case, and it's Park Central versus the Conservation Commission, and that's also in Worcester Superior Court. But that turns on what happens in all these other cases, because in that particular case, it was the Conservation Commission that believed they had jurisdiction under the wetland, the local wetland protection bylaw, and that was our advice, because there was not enough input done at a Zoning Board of Appeals level, when all of that was reviewed under the Chapter 40B comprehensive permit. But that's, that's dormant now only because it depends what this plan looks like. So that's the overview of Park Central, very complicated litigation, but that's basically the, the, all cases pending. And the only thing I can tell you is that the Director of Finance, Treasure Collector, several years ago, had sent to me a battery of cases to collect delinquent taxes, real estate taxes, and at that time, we, we, as a group, collected a significant amount. Since then, everything has been relatively in order, except that a new group has come in, and we've been asked to aggressively collect those taxes, because it's only fair to the residents of the town that pay their taxes timely to expect everyone else to pay. And there are a whole variety of reasons why people don't pay their taxes on real estate, much of which is, is no defense, but in any event, we are on that process, and I believe the Treasure Collector told me today that we recently collected about $150,000 outstanding. There's still a significant amount that we still have to collect, but we are doing that process for the first time in about 15 years. That is the overview of the things that I can tell you about, unless you have any other questions about any other matter.
That's wonderful, I appreciate the $150,000 outstanding, I'm sure the taxpayers do as well, so thank you. Thank you for the, the comprehensive update. I know I get asked, I'm sure the members of the board get asked about different things, and it's, it's nice to have some, some type of idea of, of what's going on. We're clearly keeping you busy. So thank you for, for what you're doing. I'll open it up to comments, questions from the board.
I think it's great that we had this update, and I encourage the board moving ahead that they have a once-a-month update from Town Council as to the status of anything that's outstanding that can be discussed in this forum.
I, I'd be glad to, whether we can do it in a public session, which we could do tonight.
Right.
Or whether or not there are significant issues that warrant executive session. Believe me, we are always available when we understand that you need to be informed.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right.
All right, next up, Town Administrators Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have anything formally this evening, obviously now the town meeting is behind us. It's some cleanup from some of the, the items. All of the collective bargaining agreements were approved, so now I'll be taking the memorandums of agreement and putting them into the, the final documents, the new collective bargaining agreements, for the board to then execute sometime, likely end of May, beginning of June. One issue that I want to bring to the board, kind of as a potential coming attraction, there was an issue that was brought to my attention in the last day or so. If you recall, there was an issue with Right Way Auto, which is one of our Class II dealers on Route 9, that was back in, in December. There was an issue with their hours of operation, number of vehicles for sale on the lot, and we sent them a letter saying, you know, these things don't seem to comply with your license, please respond. They sent us back something saying, you know, we were, you know, unaware that they, that they were incorrect, we'll make those changes, these things will take place, and, and, you know, the answer was satisfactory. I've been made aware in the last day or so that there may be some additional issues regarding Right Way Auto, sale of vehicles that unable to, to get title, some issues with getting refund checks, so, and, and I understand there may be more than this one particular issue I was made aware of. So Police Department is providing me with a report, and once I review that report with the chief, I'll then make a determination and speak with the chair as to whether we want to have the, the license holder in for a discussion and/or revocation hearing. It's something that, in, you know, almost seven years I've been here, we have not done, and I've, I've actually done very few of them in my career, but if the situation warrants it, I think, you know, the board needs to, you know, make sure that it is, that it is, you know, adequately addressed. So I will be bringing that to your attention once I have a little bit more information.
If I may, just a question to that.
Sure.
You'll send the business owner a letter that we're in the process of a review, since we announced it.
Yes.
Here this evening, a formal letter, so...
Absolutely. Absolutely, the information has come to our attention, and we're, we're doing an internal review at this point, and if there's anything further, we'll let them know.
Okay. Thank you. Chairman's report. Just a couple things I wanted to share, that the other night, I know this is big in some towns, Framingham does a big deal of, it's called First Night. It's a night where you get the first warm rain and the critters cross the road. It's a night where you get the first warm rain and the critters cross the road, salamanders and frogs. So, that took place the other night here in Southborough. Typically, it's a rather small group that goes, but there was close to 30 people. A lot of families with children, you know, to be able to go out. We didn't cross a lot of anything, but it was just great that they were out and they were looking at the frogs as they were in the vernal pools and the peepers were chirping. And so that was a really great turnout on that. Also, the Main Street, the Main Street project is going to be start. Ms. Gallagher had given an update that the project will begin on April of 2019, that the work in 2019 will generally consist of tree removal, water main replacement, drainage upgrades, third-party utility work, stone wall work, and some curbing and sidewalk work. That's just for informational purposes to anyone that may be watching. Also, I had attended back in January, an alcohol collaborative that Southborough is part of. And they go over the regulations that we have. Some towns are pretty extensive. It was a great class. I enjoyed going. Leslie from the Board of Health and Chief Paulus also went. When we were there and looking at some of the policies that other towns had in place, ours seemed a little sparse compared to what some of the other towns did. I've been talking to Mr. Purple about it and Lori as well. Lori's actually in the process, and she'd already started that before I attended this, of updating some of the policies, bringing it a little bit more current to what we have. Ours is kind of spread out into different places and compiling it all into one place like other towns do. So, that's just an update. It was, it was an interesting class. There was a lot of talk about different towns restricting certain things such as NIPS because in certain towns it seems to be a problem with the trash and whatnot. But that's just an update that Lori will be bringing and through Mr. Purple will be bringing something forward to the board for your review going further. Also, the cable committee is having a public hearing as part of the licensing process here at the townhouse tomorrow at 7 o'clock. And the last thing is, just a reminder that on April 29th, the new fire chief starts. So, that's all I have for chairman's report. Are there any, anything anybody would like to add under members' report? Mrs. Faniff?
It's not a report, but I think we need to recognize and say thank you to the numerous committees that spent multiple hours preparing for town meeting. It was a long day, and I want to thank the citizens that participated in that, on the 23rd. But behind the scenes, I cannot count the number of meetings that took place for various boards, CPCs, the town administrator and his finance group, this group, and others. There was numerous hours of work put into town meeting, and I want to say thank you. It was muchly appreciated by this board, and I think we were very successful.
Thank you. I completely second that, Mrs. Faniff. Thank you.
If I could, just two quick points.
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, we, Mr. Purple, Ms. Gallagher, and I will be meeting at the State House tomorrow on the potential for improvements at the Southborough train station. So, I'll be able to update the board at our next meeting on how that meeting went. And just wanted to point out as well, with following on to your update on the Main Street project, I do plan to reach out to Mr. Healy. I think it would be good for the Main Street construction group to have a meeting with Ms. Gallagher. They're a resource that, you know, a lot of people reach to for questions, information on the project. And as Karen had said, clearly, you know, this is not a town project. It is a state project. So, they're not really in a position where any decisions need to be made by that board. But I think just a direct update with them would be smart. So hopefully, we can get back to meet again.
That's great. Thank you. And Karen, thank you as well for the update that you provided. I'm not going to put you on the spot to add anything further. I think we touched on the high points of it at this point. So, thank you. Next up, consent agenda. We are going to, D has been taken off, just because town council updated us on that already. And we're going to hold E until after the executive session. So, are there any holds from A, B, C, and F? Okay. Do we have a motion for approval of meeting minutes, March 19th, 2019, March 23rd, 2019, March 27th, 2019, accept Friends of Southborough Recreation donation of $4,310 towards scholarships and voucher program for Recreation Department, approval of Arbor Day proclamation, and appoint Lori Luvoli, Building Commissioner to Southborough Emergency Management Agency?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Other matters before the board, naming of the townhouse flagpole. We had talked about this prior. Mrs. Faniff, do you?
Well, I brought it up, I believe, a meeting ago, not long ago. And it's been discussed for a number of years since I've been here. And I think we're probably years behind in doing something as far as recognizing our volunteers with their commitment of time, their expertise, their dedication to this town. So, I'm recommending that we, or I'd like to see the flagpole dedicated to the volunteers of this community.
And I think at our last meeting, we had voted to support that. I believe what's, we're looking to do is we need to come up with language and a plaque and a placement of the plaque.
I'm not one for writing lengthy statements. I think it's more of a gratitude of thanks. I don't feel it needs to be much more than that. I'm comfortable with anything that the board made as, side as appropriate. But I don't think this needs to be a lengthy statement. I think it's all encompassing. I mean, it's the volunteers that walk our streets to pick up the litter during the green weekend that we have here. It's volunteers that work in the town hall. I mean, it's encompassing. It's everyone. So, I will allow you to come up with the language if you'd like.
We'll come up with some language and an idea maybe, and we can discuss it at our next meeting. I'd like to, me personally, I would like to get this wrapped up before you leave, Mrs. Faniff. I think this is one thing that we can certainly take care of before you go. I know you've wanted to do this for a long time, and I think we have the opportunity to do this now. And I'd like to see the language tied up before you go.
Well, I'm not asking my name to be put on it.
No, no, I know, but this was, this was something that you had brought to the board.
Yes.
And it was something that you would like to have seen done. So, while you're on the board, I'd like to get it wrapped up.
Fine.
So, we'll put forth some language and, so basically, just, just kind of we're clear. So, it's dedicated to all those that volunteer.
In whatever capacity, to make this town as strong as it is and a community that we enjoy.
To those who serve the town, do you want to, do you want, do you want the word volunteer? Do you, and we can do this offline. I'm not trying to.
Right. Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, we'll come up with something and we'll put it on our agenda for our next meeting. And then we can approve it and then we can move forward.
Fine.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Shea, did you add anything or were you?
No, I don't.
Okay. Perfect. Town meeting recap. So, as Mrs. Faniff had said, it was a very successful town meeting. It was our first try on a Saturday, I think, if I'm not mistaken. The first, the first session had over 300 people there. The second session had over 200 people.
Just shy, I think 290 was about the high point of the second session.
It was, of the second. Okay. So, obviously, it was a good first try. I think we saw a lot of friendly faces there. I think we saw a lot of new faces there that actually came to the mic and were very welcomed by the hall, which I thought was, was, again, a great testament to Southborough. Hopefully, we'll see more. Hopefully, word will spread again and we'll see more people step forward. Based on that, I think there's some, and again, we'll go down. And if the board wants to say anything about town meeting as well, obviously, the opportunity's there. But just some recaps that I took from it, and I'd like to kind of go down the board in case there's something I missed as well. I think some of the citizens' petition articles gave a lot of food for thought on different things. I know on the final article, town meeting had voiced a support of the board to start a pilot discussion. So, I think the board, I don't know necessarily tonight, but I don't know. I think the board should take a position whether they want to reactivate the pilot committee, if that's going to be our first step. Kind of looking for a guideline of where, where and how we should start the process going forward on this.
I think we can vote this evening to start the process by opening it up to residents, if that's your choice. And expanding on it. But we can do that this evening.
So, are you in favor, Mrs. Faniff, of reactivating the pilot committee?
I am with a representative of the board of selectmen and two citizens, expanding the size to five. I think the last two reports we did, it was treasurer, collector, assessor, and I represented the town once, and I believe Mr. Rooney did.
Okay. So, your suggestion would be the same, the treasurer, the assessor, remember, the board of selectmen and two citizens at large? So, we can certainly put out a appeal for, I know Ms. Fiore has applied for this already. But we can certainly put out a tweet, put it on the website, that we are looking for citizens at large to fill this committee. So, again, Mrs. Faniff, you sat on this?
Yes.
Through the pilot committee, through the last process. I know when I read it, it's, the pilot committee meets. Can you just take a second for those that may not know what the pilot committee did and what their end result was?
Well, you need the help of the assessors' office because they put the information together. We reached out, we reached out to the superintendent of schools. We reached individually out to the private schools. When I said schools, I meant public schools. We need their assistance. We met individually with each nonprofit here in this room as to what the value of their donations may be to the town, not necessarily monetary donations. We did a report. At that time, we did have two citizens on it. And what they brought was the talents from their professions into the discussion that we did not have. And we came up with a report. And I have to say, it did sit there for a while. Nobody seemed, there was a presentation here. And I know when Mr. Rooney did it, there was another presentation. And it's, I'm kind of curious that all of a sudden, it's piquing the interest of the community. And I'm glad because it's overdue. It needs to be done again. So, I welcome anyone that wants to participate in the process. And if you get, you know, 10 people that are interested, then I see no harm in expanding the committee. That's a reasonable size. But it should take place here in the town hall because the resources are available in the town hall if the assessors or the treasurer needs information.
Okay. And basically, the end of the report was a recommendation?
It was a recommendation to the board of selectmen.
Okay. Okay.
But I would do that. And I'd also give it a very short window.
When you were?
Report back to the board of selectmen.
Updates or a final report?
An update if necessary, but a final report.
So, we need to update the charge?
Which would be helpful if you're going to make a presentation at next year's town meeting.
Yep. Okay.
As to what the outcome of the resources are.
Okay. So, Mr. Purple, between the next two meetings, could we forward out to the board what the pilot charge was at the time? And then we can do some updates and we can get that set. And in the meantime, we can still get it out, advertise, you know, if there's people through, you know.
And if Mrs. Fiore is interested, I'd certainly appoint her, if her paperwork's in, at your next meeting. We should start the process.
Yeah. Nope. I understand her paperwork is in.
And then I'd put her on the agenda.
Is what I've been told.
So, Madam Chair, the, the, the charge is not, we don't, some of the committees that we've done, especially those more recently in that, there's a formal charge that we have. The charge is simply what we have on the website, which, you know, we try to describe each committee and what they do. The charge says, "The pilot committee shall develop a payment in lieu of taxes policy with the goal of encouraging tax-exempt institutions to make voluntary payments to help offset the costs of providing town services to those institutions. While monetary payments in lieu of taxes are preferable, the board recognizes that in some cases, in-kind contributions in our community partnerships may be acceptable. The pilot committee shall develop a methodology for valuing any such proposed in-kind contribution or community partnership." It's actually a very good.
It is.
You know, the statement is, statement is very good. But that is essentially what you have, is your description for the committee. And I think to Mrs. Faniff's point, to define the membership of the committee, to include that, define the membership of the committee, and then the goals of what you're seeking for the committee to do. So, I can put together, put it together in kind of the format that we've been accustomed to seeing for some of the newer committees we've done, and get that out to board for your review. And then have that on, on the agenda for the next meeting.
Right. Okay. Yeah. I think that's, I think that's a great first step. And, and I think we all heard at town meeting what the taxpayers want. So, anything further to add on that topic?
I guess the only thing I would add, and I don't mean this in any way to delay anything because I heard the message as well at town meeting. But, I mean, the reality is, we're going to be a changing board in a short time as well. And it could definitely be, and not to downplay.
I know what you're saying.
Input that you and Mr. Schiffern could have in this process as well. But there definitely could be some, some new perspectives to consider as well. So, just in timing of everything, well, I think it is important that we move quickly. I think this is something that isn't going to get wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. It's something that the newly constituted board is going to be dealing with as a whole. So, I think it's.
You can set the table for that, for that to be one of the first items to be considered by the new board.
Exactly.
Okay.
Mr. Lit?
Just a quick.
Welcome.
Thanks. Just a.
Name and address, please. Sorry.
Tim Lit, Woodland Road.
Thank you.
Just a quick observation. There was a lot of discussion about this at advisory of late. So, I would encourage you to include an advisory member in this. I know that advisory also has at least one member who was formerly on the board of a similar nonprofit, and that kind of expertise is likely to be helpful.
Thank you. Yeah. That's a very good point. So, if you did the board of selectmen and advisory member, at least two citizens, the treasurer, the assessor, assessor, that's six.
Well, two are not voted, William. It's really a report.
Agreed.
I mean, we didn't vote on anything.
Yeah.
So, I don't think it really matters, the number of individuals on it. Because it's a report. You're not going to change the material or what someone donates or what the facts are.
Okay. So, we're in agreement, though, that we'd like to see a member from advisory, a member from the board, and citizens, along with the treasurer and the assessor. And for me, this is the first step. And I think once this step is done, then the board can actually come back. And there will be the new members on the board at that time as well and decide what path that the board would like to, to choose. But I think for our next meeting, if we could, I'd like to see it at least advertised even for a couple of weeks. And then we can decide if we want to wait or what we want to do. But I think at least if we start the process, okay.
And another part of that process was that we reached out to every department head and asked them to provide what they receive from nonprofits. So, you had a heads up as to what the departments are providing. I mean, I'm aware of, I mean, I don't want to make this a long discussion. But when numbers are provided at a town meeting, you have to ask, what do the numbers represent? If it's an ambulance call, the town gets reimbursed by insurance, hopefully. It could have been one of our children playing in a gym or on a field. We, you're not going to get the detail, but you'll get a better idea of what the true cost is. And what else the departments receive as far as emergency situations, whether it's the nurses' station, the kitchen, the schools itself in the past. I mean, there are other things that go into this. But the departments really should provide the committee or the chair what they receive or have received.
Okay. Thank you.
So, let me just, so I just want to be clear. So, we'd like to advertise this.
For citizens at large.
For citizens at large before the next meeting, so that you can kind of have an idea of what you've got. So, the clerk's office, right now, you've got a pilot committee of, I believe, three? Because it was reduced from five to three. Because it was reduced from five to three, I think that happened like the first year I was here. Right now, we have nobody sitting on that. And if we're going to change that, the clerk is gonna, the clerk's office is gonna require, before we're advertising for these positions to be open, that we file a new, a new charge for the committee.
Could you file that charge, membership five to ten?
So I can keep the same, I actually really like the description of the committee and can change it to, I just wanna make sure I have, and if you wanna defer to the chair, that she makes sure that I've got everything the way that you want it, then I can submit the charge. So are we looking at, so are we looking at seven members? Do you want an odd number?
Yeah.
Of committee members? So basically you would be looking at the finance director, treasurer collector, the principal assessor, member of the Board of Selectmen, member of advisory, and I assume three citizens to make a seven, okay? And that the committee is going to prepare a recommendation, a final report to prepare to the Board of Selectmen. You had mentioned a short window. Do you wanna define the short window, within ninety days of appointment?
I mean, well, based on the prior report that you did, and I know some of the information's been compiled, but it's gonna have to be recompiled and gone over again, is ninety days with summer coming realistic?
No.
Probably not.
It wouldn't be realistic anyway.
Okay, so what do you think, Mrs. Faniff? Again, it's based on, you've sat on this a prior time and you have the experience on it. Would six months be more realistic?
You will need something in six months.
Okay.
If it's gonna benefit town meetings at all.
So six months.
Correct.
And then if we need to adjust it-
Hundred and eighty days from appointment.
Yeah.
Yes.
Brian's checking my math, okay. I saw that.
Okay.
Okay, so if you're comfortable, if the board's comfortable then, that I'll work with the chair or whoever you'd like me to work with just to make sure that I've got the details as we discuss them tonight.
And Mr. Shea, would you be more comfortable with getting the, giving it two to three weeks to get any applications in and then having the new board make the decisions and have time to review? And I'm fine with that as well.
I would.
I would.
And then I think that newly constituted board can talk amongst the five to determine who's best to serve from the board.
So why don't we give it then? You're four weeks away from the election. Can we, close to four weeks, a little bit more. How many weeks do we wanna put this out to advertise for people to, usually we close the window, so-
Well, if you, if today is the second, you know, we'll have this up and active no later than the fourth. You could, May fourth is a Saturday, fifth, sixth, you know, all interest by May sixth.
And then we would be meeting two weeks.
You could do May sixth or May third.
We meet the seventh, but the new board would be the second.
You meet the seventh, the new board will meet-
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, so.
Yep, sounds good.
Yeah.
So, third, sixth?
Sixth.
Sixth?
Sixth?
Yep.
Okay, and then it gives time to compile everything and get everything together as well, so. Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Other recaps from town meeting?
I'd echo what you had said. I thought it was a, for the first time going to a Saturday and starting at a one o'clock, I thought it was very successful. Again, ultimately, I think it's the items that's on the warrant that is really gonna drive attendance.
Yeah.
But the objective that was put forth last year was successfully implemented this year, I thought. And again, great thanks to everybody who worked so hard with the shortened timeframe to get everything wrapped up and ready by the town meeting date. Really, the one other follow-on, one other that I know that we need to take on is the restriction for the library.
Yes.
So we'll need to start considering who's gonna be the holder for that as that project moves forward as well.
Seeing as that was funded through CPC, what would the process be on a holder? Based on the requirements that CPC had, we couldn't change the article. I'm just curious now, as far as the PR goes, what the process?
So we'll need, yeah, so like I said, we'll need to go back and take a look at that and have discussions with town council as to, as to next steps on that.
Let's do that so we can move forward with that as well.
I do, the one thing, if I may, just, you know, in terms of town meeting, obviously, was very pleased that, you know, all the boards and committees, and I've said this before, when we start this process, the goal is to get everybody on the same foot with the operating and the capital budget. And some years it's more of a struggle than others. And, you know, in the, in the six budgets, you know, that we've done since I've been here, the first budget, library amended on the floor and got a little bit something additional. But since then, you know, the budget that's been presented at town meeting has been the budget that we've ended up with that's been voted. And I think that, to Mrs. Faniff's point, is the result of a lot of work and a lot of people having a lot of meetings and a lot of discussions. And this year, I think with the compressed timeframe and everything was a little bit more of a struggle. You know, advisory lost a lot of people in the middle of the process. And, you know, I give credit to advisory for getting everything done, you know, in a timely fashion and really contributing to the process and the discussion. And I think that, I think that was great. Also wanna give kudos to the moderator. This was the first year that he used the new consent item. He didn't wanna call it consent agenda, but new consent item to handle some of these annual articles and articles that really didn't have any discussion. There was no issues with them. Thirteen articles presented, ten articles that actually went through and won with one vote. I think if that one question was answered as to who owns a golf course, we might have had the eleventh article. But, you know, I think it was good and we actually identified some articles that may be added next year. I think this is gonna help move town meeting along and keep people interested. To Mr. Shea's point, the articles are what's gonna drive the attendance. I also think it's worth noting that, you know, we were probably, if you exclude the citizen petition articles, we probably were three or four articles away from finishing just about five, a little bit before five o'clock. So, you know, in the normal course of business, you know, it could have been that the moderator could have begged indulgence of the hall to see if we wanted to finish rather than coming back at seven. Probably another hour or so may have done it. Again, the citizen petitions, of the second session, we spent three hours roughly, you know, on the citizen petitions. And I think the discussion on them was very good and, you know, but I think town meeting, to me, would seem that they'd like to see more of a collaborative process on some of these items. And I know that, you know, Mr. Butler and Mr. Hamilton spoke to process on some of these issues. And I know that some of you up here are big on process. Not mentioning anyone, but I think that that collaboration on some of these things is how we're gonna get, you know, these things done and how to get things supported. The public safety, you know, was a huge item, you know, several meetings ago. It was the spirit of collaboration that got us that, you know, that process. And, you know, hopefully we're closer to the end than the beginning at that now, so. But again, I appreciate the support and appreciate the recognition that Mrs. Faniff offered this evening for the finance team and, you know, all the department heads. Everybody did a great job this year. And next year, we're gonna be starting in September again. But, you know, the expectations will be the same and I'm sure that everybody's gonna, you know, do the same as they did this year, so.
Thank you, and thank you again, Mr. Purple, for your hard work leading up to town meeting. One final thing I will add, and this is just, I'd like to put this back on for a future discussion. I've heard a lot of feedback as well from town meeting, from people. And I know Mr. Haggerty had sent out a note as well regarding doing a spring and a fall. I know we briefly touched on that and we decided we would come back to it, that we only wanted to do changing the date and changing town meeting week at the time. I would certainly like to see that come back up and be discussed at some point. I think had it been in the spring and a fall, you'd get people out of there typically in one session, potentially. One in the spring and one in the fall. So, and budgets could be taken care of in the spring. As Mr. Purple said, we were three articles, I think, away from completing the budget in the first session. So that's just something to consider and just to have a discussion about.
At the end of May, I'd bring that up.
Mrs. Faniff, I was gonna wait. I was gonna wait, but I just figured while we're having the discussion on town meeting that I would bring that up. So, okay, next. Request from Golf Management Company for waiver of rental fees for 2019 season. I would like to start this off by adding, I'm sure, Mrs. Faniff, you've heard some comments. I've heard some comments and I'm sure Mr. Shea has as well regarding golf and the golf season. I did attend the golf meeting last Thursday. There was a healthy discussion on where the golf stood. At that point, I had asked the chair of the golf committee to, I was planning on walking it myself on Friday and I asked him to walk it with Mr. Purple and I and another member also came along. One of my takeaways from that was in finding a path forward. We've had three unsuccessful bids. Town meeting was very clear that they'd like to see golf remain there and it's just, how do we get there? I know there's some, there was frustration with the Golf Management Company. I know Mr. Purple has been speaking to them and he can speak more to that. But just from the meeting that we had, I thought we're moving forward in a positive way with the path. The plan would be to, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, kind of what we had discussed at this meeting was potentially with the new architect putting it back out to bid at the end of May. I think for the golf course management company, having a plan in place, they had different expectations than happened when golf started this year. So I think for a level of comfort for the second, the next two years on the contract potentially, I think if we have a clear plan in place, which we currently don't have, that's a necessity in doing and that's something that we had all spoke about at that meeting, just so the boards are aware that that meeting had taken place. As far as the note, Mr. Purple, I'll let you continue with the note and your discussions that you've had.
Sure, okay, so let me, I'm not quite sure where to start with that lead-in. But let me, let me speak to the letter that you have in your packet from Mr. Harrison, who's the president of the management company for South World Golf Club. Mrs. Braccio is correct. I think that golf had different expectations at the beginning of the season. I think the expectation was that this season was going to be a better season than last season. And if you recall, the end of last season, they closed a couple of weeks early. It became a little bit untenable with a lot of the construction going on. Did you wanna?
No, we did get hit with a pretty early snowstorm as well that coincided with when-
It did push things along, but you know what, but like I said, and I think it made it a little bit easier when the contractor who was, you know, when you start off the project, you're doing all the site work. And, you know, to be able to close the site down and just focus on the construction and the site work at this point. I think the management company hoping that, hoped that when they opened up at the end of March, beginning of April this year, things would look a lot different, things would be in better shape. We had CPC money, which was approved for some renovations to the course, retaining wall, new parking area, golf access road. All of those things would be done, some of the holes would be, that are being disrupted, would be remedied. Everything would be much better. It's not, okay? You know, with the way the construction has proceeded. And I think some of the expectations versus realities may not have been clearly delineated or communicated or understood, pick your position. But the town, not through a lack of effort. You can speak to the results, and I had this conversation with Mr. Harrison. He says, you know, "Not from a lack of effort on the town, but where we are is very different than we thought we would be." The town did three bids for the renovation work for the golf holes that are affected by the project. Three times, the bids came in in excess of, you know, a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars more than what the town had bid. It became apparent to me and conveyed this to the golf committee that I was of the strong opinion that the advice and the work that they were getting from the golf architect to put the bid package together, for lack of a better word, I think was defective in terms of the work that needed to be done. And despite the assurances from the architect that this was going to come in where we needed to be, it never did. And so at this point, I've asked the committee to look in a different direction. I've talked to Mr. Harrison, he has an architect that they work with. He's gonna be in the area and do some work at one of the other clubs that they manage. And he's gonna have him come over, take a look at the things that need to be done. And then he will have him engage with the town, either myself directly or through the golf committee. I prefer the golf committee, that's the way that this was previously done. And then we can maybe get that out to bid. The current conditions at the course, I think there's a little bit, the clubhouse, so let's talk about the positives, all right? The clubhouse has been moved, the clubhouse is on a new foundation, the parking lot has been completed, the retaining wall has been completed, the access road has been completed. And we have worked with the contractor who has now shifted the majority of their focus to the public safety building. And they're working to ensure that there is egress through the site to the golf road to get the golfers back into the, into the parking area. Flipping the clubhouse around, if you remember the discussion, so you went from having the way the new foundation sits, you went from having the front of the clubhouse two feet off the ground to having the old front of the clubhouse now ten feet off the ground. And so it presented some additional egress issues that we still have to figure out. For the backside, it does not affect the occupancy because based on the occupancy load for the building, it only requires the one egress. We still would like, we're still going to put in stairs on the other egress, talk about a ground patio. I've had those conversations with the golf course superintendent. The septic field was required to be operational under the existing contract. It is operational, however, it is also still within the construction area because it is still the contractor's responsibility to do the landscaping, which is to be done as a matter of course for the project, which is something that is not happening, you know, immediately. It's something that's being done as, you know, the work is completed and the site work, it's, you know, what the paving and now the landscaping and the plantings and everything else. So the construction fence is still up and around the septic area. And, you know, the contractor is like, "Well, look, if you want the construction fence down, then relieve us of the responsibility to have to finish that work. We're happy to turn that over to you and provide you a miniscule credit. But, you know, as long as we're responsible for it, we need to make sure we maintain control over it." So some of the aesthetics, you know, are not what they'd like them to be. You know, the construction fence is right up against the temporary ninth green. It does require a little more distance for golfers to traverse, especially for those that are walking to the first tee. And I think it has caused some of the groups that use the course specifically, or particularly St. Mark's, I believe, you know, they have gone elsewhere for their golf team. So that was a significant number of rounds and fees that were paid. So they're not, so they're seeing a little bit of a dip in revenue because the course cannot be seen. You've got, as Mr. Harrison said to me, you've got seven good holes and you've got two holes that are making do at this point because of the conditions of either the tee or the green. So golf is anticipating a dip in revenue this year, given some of these circumstances. We have basically tried to find a starting point for the season. Um, we have basically tried to find a starting point for the season, saying that, you know, if we can get you to this point, which is where we think we, we are, know that in the coming weeks and, you know, up between now and say July, things are going to improve and you're gonna see, you know, things will improve on a, on a daily, on a weekly basis, and the conditions will improve for you. Um, but that being said, um, the management company does not see the revenues being even where they were last year. Um, so, you know, making a profit this year is gonna be very difficult to do. Um, and, um, they are asking that the monthly, um, rent, so to speak, that they pay to the town, which over a season is about twenty, twenty thousand, between twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars a year, that the town waive that for the season, given the financial issues that they see coming because of the condition of the course. Um, now, you may say, "Well, so the season starts, start at the end of March." By July, they should be in good shape. Yes, they should be in better shape. Um, I don't know that the strand of grass will be on the septic field yet where the contractor can turn that back over to us, uh, at that point. The other issue is, we're going to move forward with the money that CPC has allocated for the golf course renovation. Um, but, um, in talking with Mr. Harrison, we've missed our window right now to do those renovations until probably late fall. So, the conditions that golf is dealing with now that are going to improve, sometime in October, they're probably going to deteriorate again if we are successful in getting a bidder to come in and do some of this restoration work for the ninth green and the first tee box. So they'll see some additional, so the disruption that they have now will abate to some degree, probably a couple of good months in the summer, and then, you know, they will see some additional disruption at the end of the season. Um, and, and that pretty much provides the backstory as to why they're asking what they're asking. The other item, and I was having this conversation with Mrs. Faniff briefly before the meeting, I do wanna point out in the letter, um, that, um, this is a two-year agreement. Um, there are two one-year extensions in the agreement, um, possible. It does not say at whose discretion. Um, but, uh, Mr. Harrison has informed me that the town should plan on putting this back out to bid for another contract at the end of the year. Um, he did not say that they would not be interested in bidding. He did not say they would be. Um, but, um, he is, uh, I think, hopeful that some of these things that we've talked about happening will come to fruition. And I think that may help to set the table one way or the other as to whether, um, New England Golf looks to, um, continue, um, with a new agreement. Either way, um, Mr. Harrison is committed to trying to help us put the new, the bid, the new bid for the, um, successor agreement for the management company in the best light that we can to make it attractive, but also make sure that, you know, the town's interests are served. Does that?
It does.
Does that frame the issue a little bit?
It does, thank you. And it, and it kinda leads back to the discussion we had. I, I know there's a level of frustration now, and, uh, as we move forward, and once, once a plan is in place, it may alleviate some of that frustration. Um, so, that being said, um, as far as Mr. Harris's, Harrison's letter, excuse me, um...
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely, Mrs. Faniff, sorry.
Uh, we're going, this is the third time we're going out to bid, correct?
This is, no, for, for the golf renovations?
We've done.
We've gone out three times.
So we need to go out again?
So we will be, yes.
We went out the first time.
Correct.
Did it go back to the Golf Committee for any rewrites, any text change, any requirements?
So, we went, so the first time it went out to bid, um, the architect prepared the specs. We took the specs, put them within the required documents, put that out to bid, let the Golf Committee know it went out to bid. Um, came back, um, way out of whack. Let the Golf Committee know that it came in out of whack and that we were going to, and that, you know, maybe we didn't get quite the market, the numbers we thought we'd get. So we put it back out again. After that, came in with similar results. Um, I sent, uh, something back to Golf Committee and said, "Look, this may be what the market is for whatever we've got for work. You've got to prioritize what you want done." And they came back and said, "We'll prioritize it with these items." Okay, so then the architect was instructed, "These are the items we're gonna put back out to bid." Said, "Okay." So the architect, you know, did, did the work, put that together, um, even prepared a document that showed us his cost analysis for each item, showing that it would come in based on our funding. Okay, so, um, but, but, you know...
So the Golf Committee has been aware of the documents as they went out to bid?
I have had conversations with, with the Chair. I've directed all my conversations through Mr. Pilecki, and he's, and, um, uh, he's been great, um, in his, um, in his day job. Uh, he handles procurement on a federal level, so he's been helpful in looking at some of these documents and everything.
All right, before it goes out, again, I'm suggesting the committee vote that that's the document that goes out.
Yes, and I'm, and I'm absolutely fine with that. I think that the, um, the committee, you know, that's why I want the committee to be the one who recommends the engagement for the architect. Um, and then that those items, that, that the documents that are prepared by the architect are approved by the committee. The rest of the documents that we put around them are just the required documents, but that's the meat and potatoes that the, that the bidders need to adhere to.
And the reason I'm asking for that is because there's now a management, um, proposal that might go out as well. So I think the committee needs to be engaged in each step of this.
Absolutely.
And it needs to start now.
Yeah, and I will say, Mr. Pilecki was, was very helpful in, um, helping to put out the, the bid documents that were put out to engage the management company.
Right.
So...
Because you may be faced with another town meeting with the funding that you have. So, I, since I'm sitting here and I've been part of that, I don't wanna leave here with some unknowns for myself. And I don't, and if it's gonna move forward, I think it needs to be, the next step should be decided by the sitting board today because we've been personally involved in it.
Right. Well, the Gol-, the Golf Committee, um, not the Golf Committee, but, you know, CPC and then Town Meeting, you know, was generous to put, you know, in, in excess of five hundred thousand dollars in place for these things to happen. And, and based on the way the other bids have come in and that, and with some retain-, um, with some, um, contingency, there's about three hundred and forty thousand dollars to be spent on these golf renovations. Mr. Harrison believes that that amount of money should be
Sufficient.
Sufficient to do what we need to do, and, you know, that we may have been looking for more than what we actually need.
Okay.
Um, for the, and everything. So, I, I am really, you know, again, I'm looking at people who, and for people who are much more knowledgeable than I am about this stuff. And so, can I tell when the architect gives me what he gives me, whether or not, you know, I need the, the nioplast? You know, um, I learned that word, you know, in, in the bid process. But, you know, you know, that I need this or I need that, you know, I, I, that, I don't know. Um, but, you know, I, I do know that, you know, this, this management company has been involved in this for quite a while, and I'm deferring to him on some of these items, that if he's got people who understand, you know, his courses, who understand what he needs, who understand, you know, what the course will, um, will require in order to make it successful and attractive, then by all means, you know, help us to engage with those people.
And I know the, the Golf Committee's meeting in, in two weeks. Um, just looking for updates on kind of where things stand, what the next step is. Mr. Purple has forwarded over to them. Uh, they requested some of the bid information, um, so they're gonna go through that themselves as well, so...
And CPC, I think, has also requested an update from golf. I sent CPC the update that I provided to Golf Committee just so that they understand. I mean, you know, see, and, and I had informal discussions with the Chair, CPC, and, um, I, I don't think that they want to just give more money.
I wouldn't have so.
You know, and I, and I don't think it's a good idea to give more money. Until you've got this money that's there, show us, you know, what you've done before, you know, you come back asking for more because I think that this should be sufficient for what they're looking to do.
Are you planning on attending that meeting?
I'll attend whatever meeting I need to, to, um, to continue to further these items.
Might be helpful.
So, CPC, I believe, is meeting April fourth. I'll have to take a look.
Okay.
I know Ms. Gillespie sent something out, so I will take a look at that.
Thank you.
And again, I think moving forward, all, everybody working together, we can get this done. I, I, I don't see this as an obstacle that, that, you know, we, we can't handle, so, um...
And I'm certainly glad that Mr. Harrison recognizes and appreciates the effort that the town has put into this.
Yes.
It's not as though we've been sitting back and doing nothing on it.
Absolutely.
Putting something out to bid three times certainly shows commitment on our part.
So he recognizes the effort, but that doesn't lessen the, doesn't lessen the disappointment as to
And it's not just his disappointment too. You know, I think this board has disappointment that
Yep.
that the bids came in the way that they did. And, you know, certainly to the defense of the Golf Course Committee, you know, how contractors price things is well beyond their control as well, so...
Right.
You know, they're to be commended for all the efforts that they've put in to, to help bring this in as well.
All right.
Having that said, and I think we're also in a position where we realize that the last time we put the management contract out, we had one bidder on this as well.
Who was the existing management company?
Existing management company.
Correct.
So, um...
So we're trying to make sure that we don't fall victim to that brave new world, so to speak?
Yep.
I would be supportive of waiving the rental fees for two thousand nineteen based on things that none of us anticipated, um, happening and, um, the ramifications to golf for that. I think there, there's a value in, um, if golf decided to get out of their contract and leave today, we would have to maintain the golf course. So there, there's costs involved in that as well. So, as a will of, uh, a show of good faith from the town that, um, you know, we do wanna see this through and, um, we are dedicated to, to trying to make this work, I, I would recommend waiving the rental fees.
You know, and I came into this myself agreeing with that side of it, but also take, looking at the perspective, well, it's, it's just April second, you know, is this an overreaction that we're so early into the season? But as Mr. Purple mentioned, the reality is that even if we are able to put another package out, uh, just given the timeframe that, that this work would need to get done, we are looking at fall before it is, that those first and ninth hole improvements are actually constructed and implemented. Um, so, you know, I, I'm leaning now towards the, um, opinion to waive the rental fees for, for the season and, you know, certainly if that's the way this board votes, hope that Mr. Harrison recognizes the continued cooperation as well and
Absolutely.
and maybe that's, you know, a reason why he would wanna keep the cooperation, keep the team together and maybe entertain an extension rather than
Yep.
re-advertising as well, so...
I agree.
Okay.
Well, move that we, uh, waive the rental fees for the two thousand nineteen season from the Golf Management Company.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll pass along those sentiments, you just mentioned everything in that, to, uh, Mr. Harrison when I let him know the, the vote of the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, the board will be entering into executive session per MGL Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Exemption Two, to discuss a successor employment agreement for the Public Works Superintendent and to approve executive session minutes of March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, and March twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, Exemption Seven. The board will be returning to open session at the conclusion of executive session. Brascio, aye?
Shay, aye.
Faniff, aye.
Fanify.
Okay, good evening. The board has returned back to open session. Last item on the agenda is the, we had previously held the approval of successor employment agreement for DPW Superintendent Karen Gallagher effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022.
So I move the successor employment agreement for DPW Superintendent Karen Gallagher.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Terry.